Those, uh, you know, the trash can with the, the, the hole cut in the top to put the plastic bottles in they, they had the kids do that.
So where does that go, Tony?
Not a clue, but I just remember seeing that when we were there.
I, uh, I can throw some light on that, I think. Um, I traded notes with the principal yesterday or today about same, same problem. They just got burned on their waste management contract renewal. I, I would assume that they've just got dumpsters that are picked up like any other business, uh, like we have at the town hall. The, the town hall dumpsters are baked into our contract for the recycling center. So they, you know, they, they gave us a price for all of it. They're, they're itemized, but, um, at this point, I don't think, uh, I think they're too late in their, in their negotiations to come back and say, hey, why don't we, you know, try and get the town's price or something, but I, I gave them what we had.
Do you know how long their contract is, Chris?
Uh, well, it's, it's coming up now, so they're, they're gonna renew. And I, I told them, you know, just do a year and, nah, okay, then see what we can do. Afterward, um, I'm not surprised that the, uh, at the, at the price spike, um, there's, there's essentially two companies that'll do that. With the frequency and size equipment they need, I think. But, uh, we'll, we'll see if we can help them out through our contract next year, um. But they're, they're just a, they're just a dumpster pickup, so there's no, without somebody transporting it from the school to a town facility. Uh, I don't think there's any way to ease their burden easily.
They are right around the corner from the recycling center.
Yeah, but there's.
Two miles.
Yeah, but there wouldn't there be a transport and handling fee as well that's gonna kind of negate the savings?
Well, actually, my, my last year on the budget committee, I recommended that they look into the possibility of getting a utility truck large enough to do, you know, a daily or, you know, a couple of times a week shuttle run of garbage over to the dump because the price of that truck would be far cheaper than even what they were paying at the time. So they, they had said they were gonna look into it, but I don't think they ever followed through. But I would say that, you know, again, I mean, a, a, at eighteen thousand a year, if, you know, if you apply a five-year lifecycle to that truck, right? Five years is ninety thousand dollars, right? At the current rate, is it gonna cost ninety thousand dollars for that truck? Probably not, you know?
You don't even need a good truck. It's a trash truck.
Now, the, the truck is the cheap part. It's, um, it's the person to touch everything three times that costs money.
Yeah. Well, it could be one of their existing, uh, you know, facilities people. That that's just one of their duties, two or three times a week, they run stuff over to the dump. Like I said, it's right around the corner, so it's not a lot of travel time. It's just the, you know, the heave ho with all the bags.
So what, Tony, wha- wha- I mean, what would they do on, uh, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday? Uh, particularly the garbage from their kitchen area and all that stuff. I mean, they, they would have to have a storage area.
Yeah, see, I don't know how many dumpsters they're using if they cut it down to just a.
Well, would we have to buy dumpsters? You know, that's another thing, too.
I'm just trying to find a simplistic, I was just thinking of a simplistic way to.
Right.
You know, and we're not getting into the trash business, even though we're already.
Yeah, I'm thinking if, if the, like the recyclables, for example, if they're pre-sorted, pre-bagged, then they could, you know, they could, I, I, I would hope they could get a key to the recycling center to just put that stuff in the appropriate place, right? And of course, we, you know, they can't throw everything down the chute while the recycling center's closed, but, um, I don't know. I mean, there, there's, there's some logistical questions to it. I don't think it's an unsolvable problem, but, um, you know, have to put a little thought into it.
If, if they're gonna get a truck that can, uh, they can plow their own parking lot.
We tried that with the fire department, Chris, and it didn't work. And we bought them a nice truck.
I'm actually surprised the school doesn't, uh, contract their own snowplow, unlike Deerfield does.
They get it for free. Why would they pay for it?
Yeah, well, yeah, 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 true, true, true. Okay, so, uh.
I, I think the bottom line is if, if, if we can help them somehow, uh, we're happy to, but, um, that they've got, they got logistical struggles to figure out that, that they know better than we do.
Gotcha. Okay, so does that, uh, does that, uh, satisfy the, the, the recycling?
If you, if you wanna just, if I could just put a, a final stamp on the whole recycling thing, we've kind of danced around things around the edges, but if you, if you, and this is a bigger question that you, you, you don't need to discuss tonight, but, uh, if you really wanna move the needle on what the recycling center's costing, um, you have to talk about systemic change. And that is what the market is telling us right now is either, uh, large-scale composting uh, or pay-as-you-throw. And there, there are.
What is that, a single stream system?
What?
Was that like similar to a single stream system?
No, um, uh, uh, composting is a, is, the, the, the vast majority of the weight of the, of the municipal waste stream is, is food waste.
Right.
That's where the poundage is, so if you, if you really want to address that, uh, the, the only, I think, the only viable thing that, that's working anywhere is composting. Um, I, I don't know that in a town with two acre zoning that composting is, you know, centralizing composting is gonna move the needle that much, but it's a conversation we ought to have.
Now, is that something that'll be stored outside, kept in dumpsters? I mean, how, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's all done outside.
So that could attract animals.
Oh, sure. Yeah, there, there are places that have figured it out. Um, uh, and secondly, uh, pay-as-you-throw, which is, which is where most, you know, the cities have all gone there already, uh, and smaller and smaller towns are headed in that direction. That would either be a monitored, has to go in a, in a bag that you buy from the city, the town. You know, it's got, you get, you, every town has its own color trash bag, you've seen that. And you police that going into the hopper. Uh, and, and probably police every other disposal mechanism at the place because of people will do what they can to get around the pay-as-you-throw. Um, or you do it with a scale. Which I don't know if any municipalities our size are doing, but, um, you know, you, you, you go to just a straight, you know, users pay the whole cost of the whole place by way of a scale and you accept recycling for free and you, and you charge by the pound for everything else that gets thrown away. That would require a, a different physical plant for us. I, I, I don't know what it would look like, but those are the two big picture things. If you really wanna change what we do, I don't think curbside pickup is an option in Nottingham. It's politically not viable and with the roads we have, it's probably not viable for to get contractors to do it, so. Those are the three big picture things that, that you can talk about down the road, but nothing else is really gonna move the needle.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else wanna weigh in?
No, I don't, I don't.
John?
Oh.
Tyler?
No.
Donna?
No.
All right, next item? I'm having a hard time reading this, uh, Tony. I, it looks like you've got it up already, right?
Yeah.
So what, what's the next, uh?
Um, well, we had the, under general business, uh, the first item was the FY twenty-one budget for public works.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to look that over, or?
Well, Sean is here, isn't he?
Yeah.
Sean, you there?
I am.
So Chris, did, Chris, did you and Sean have something different that you wanted to share compared to last time? Did you wanna review that or anything?
Uh, no, I don't think we have anything different. Um, we had, uh, you know, Sean had, had, uh, submitted this, uh, first draft budget and that, uh, you, you guys wanted to talk about, uh, about that, so that's why I, I asked Sean to come, you, you had asked for him. We, we're also still, uh, gonna propose to you the, the dump truck and the loader, uh, as we had talked about the last time Sean was with you. We haven't changed anything since, uh, you got a, you got an updated version of that budget today, but nothing's changed in the, the proposed twenty-one number, so. Uh, this is really, uh, what do you wanna talk to Sean about, since we've got him? And then, uh, we have road standards later if you want, and wanna talk, uh, longer term about some bridge projects while Sean's here, just, uh, briefly. I think that's everything on our list. Sean may have something else to add in.
No, no, that'll cover it. We just, Berry, um, Berry Road Bridge is gonna be added. That wasn't one of them that we, um, I planned on when we discussed the budget, but, uh, there's something that popped up last week that we were seeing that was happening out there.
Well, you wanna tackle that first?
All right, sure. Um, it'd be the, uh, the, the head wall on the second culvert heading towards Rollins Road on Berry Road in the swamp area is developing sinkholes. Uh, further investigation shows that the bottom of the head wall is, uh, no longer existing on one side. I'm gonna have to, and, um, get some stone, large stones back in there on, in the water, tuck them up in there, probably dig a hole down on the other side in the road and then fill that in with some, um, suitable materials to, uh, minimize any more erosion through those, uh, through the void or through the missing rocks at the bottom of the culvert, but uh, there was a date stamped on it, that head walls were up built in like nineteen forty-nine or fifty some.
Wow.
Like that, so, you know, they've come to their life expectancy and now we're, um, we gotta look at doing something different out there now. I don't know if it's a culvert replacement or it's a bridge and that will be deemed by, it would be some significant engineering that would need to, uh, go in, be involved in this to figure out what the, what we're supposed to do. We have two large culverts out there that cross that body of water. When I say large, uh, I believe they're forty-eight inch.
When we get heavy rains, uh, Sean, does that road flood a lot?
I haven't seen it flood. It's been high, but I have not witnessed it in my tenure here that it's come across the road.
Okay. Cause it seems kind of low. Is, is that a fair statement?
Well, I mean, we just came out of a drought and we're catching up, so. I mean, it may appear that way, um, I, you know, I haven't been here quite two years yet and I've seen it higher, yes, but given the fact that we just.
I'm sorry, Sean, maybe, maybe I should have been more, uh, uh, descriptive. I meant the road as far as ratio with the water, the road seems low as opposed to.
No, we've been actually applying gravels toward it. We just, uh, right, right before Thanksgiving, we went out there and, and put another, I don't know, six, eight dump truck loads across that bridge of, uh, of gravel, so I don't think it's going down.
Okay. All right. All right, now, th- th- this will need more discussion to determine what you think you might need, bridge versus culverts?
I think we're gonna need some preliminary engineering out there and, and, um, see what, what's, uh, what we need to do.
Okay.
Do we have a road count on that road?
Uh, we probably do. I don't have it readily available. And Chris, I don't know if you know when the last time road council down out there?
Sure, oh, traffic count on Berry Road?
Yes, yeah.
No, we don't, we, we don't have anything on that, the, um, we, we, we might have something from, from Poor Farm, uh, down there when, when we were counting, uh, stuff for, for the Ledge Farm project. We counted at Poor Farm at Berry, but we don't have anything for Berry. It's too, too low at the traffic count to justify, you know, the, the traffic's too low to justify any counting in the state. Uh, since it's not a bridge, the state doesn't count it either, they, you know, they don't, they count most roads with, with bridges, but.
If we were being, it's just, uh, gonna replace those culverts, is that something we can do as a town without hiring out?
Um, no, there'll be, uh, it'll be an extensive culvert job. There'll be a significant wetlands permitting process that would need to be. I mean.
If we were just to replace those two forty-eight inch culverts, uh, is that something that we could handle as a town, or?
No, not, not with the amount of water that's out there and you, you have to be building some coffer dams and then pumping systems set up to bypass pump the water around while the culverts are replaced.
But that means, that means lots of state permits, John. That's, that's where.
That's why, I'm just trying to figure that exactly. I was thinking of watching the money roll through my head saying.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so that, that comes, that, the, the, the Berry Road culvert versus bridge question, uh, uh, that spot has been on the long-term CIP list. Yeah. For six and a half years at least, cause, you know, it, it's just been there. We, we've known that someday we're gonna have to deal with it, but it, it's always been way down the list because it wasn't imminent, um.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding, Chris, you and, uh, Sean, this, this should probably be addressed like immediately and not wait much longer, correct? Am I understanding that?
Oh, I, I'm gonna address the, what's going on now and then buy some time. Uh, yes, probably should have our engineering company come out there and let's take a look at it and let's evaluate it, discuss it and go from there.
Okay, and you think you can make it, uh, manageable, like, cause this process with permits and all this stuff takes time, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I could, yeah, but yes, we can, uh, get it so it's safe out there. We can, we can control what's going on right now.
All right.
Yeah, and the, in the bigger context, um, now, the bri- bridges are tricky because of the permitting and engineering, permitting drives engineering. We don't get engineer just for the sake of getting engineers all the time, but, um, uh, this has to sit in context that we're, we're already doing preliminary engineering on Kelsey Road, that bridge that we shrunk down to one lane. For the culvert that we shrunk down to one lane earlier this year. Um, that's now, the, the, actually, we were just talking to Sean the other day. He's got a, he's got to rejigger his plow roots because of that culvert. Um, and can't run big trucks out there anymore.
Wow.
So the, the Kelsey Road culvert, uh, we're trying to get into the pipeline for the state bridge aid project. And we also have a massive culvert on Cooper Hill Road, if you're familiar with the, the little chicane that comes pretty early in Cooper Hill Road by the old mill there. Uh, Sean, you can probably describe the condition of that better than I, but all three of those are, are on our radar now in various stages of, of, uh, criticality, I guess.
Yeah, the Cooper Hill Road is developing little sinkholes here and there, and so, and it had been identified before I had stepped into this position with the town that something needed to be done out there, was coming to its life expectancy. There's some fixes that could go on that could buy us some more time that I've done in the past um, with su- some cements and stuff that, uh, we put a company in there and they can do a patch job and stuff, but we have to get back in there and, um, and determine this, the, where the, what the condition is now and alls I see on the top right now, cause I haven't been in there, is that, uh, we, there's little dimples and, um, a couple of sinkholes and we fill them in with some pavement.
So what, what, what do you, Chris, what do you need, need from us or Sean, um? You know, uh, try to set aside some funds for that for next budget, or?
I, I think with the, Sean, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think with what we're proposing, we can handle the Band-Aid on Berry. We can, uh, continue to handle the engineering for, uh, Kelsey's. It, we're just, we're thinking longer term, um, the, the, all three of these are gonna, when the, when the time comes, they're all too big for the typical single-year three hundred thousand dollar warrant article that we often throw in for major projects for, for highway.
To, to help you out a little bit, Chris, on that, just a number that's been thrown out just for Kelsey Road and Cooper Hill will probably fall in the same price range. We're talking seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars for those repairs or those replacements.
Wow.
So wait, so when are you proposing that that gets done?
Well, they, we're in, trying to get, uh, we're in the process now of, of writing the grant to get into the grant, uh, program that Chris talked about, but that's, uh, that could take up to five years.
And we don't have five years, if I understand correctly, right?
Well, I don't, I can't answer that right now. I mean, we have it shrunk down, we have a ten-ton weight limit. Um, like, uh, Chris said, um, I'm gonna have to have a one-ton do the plowing on that section of road from east lane now to the Lee Line and back. Can't send, it can't send dump trucks over it. I mean, they have a ten-wheeler plowing that area and they, they're not allowed over. It's only a ten-ton limit.
So even that smaller, that smaller Mack is over ten tons?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, um, you know, if, if, um, depending on what we, we learn about Cooper Hill, uh, it may or may not be the kind of thing that could be, become eligible for bridge aid from the state. Um, Kelsey Road looks to make, Sean, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelsey Lot Road looks like a better chance to be, um, eligible for bridge aid.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Uh, and then Berry Road, if, if Berry Road is just culvert replacements, then there'd be no bridge aid. Uh, but if we wanna keep the road open forever, we're, we're gonna have to put big numbers in there. Uh, if, if the two culverts became a bridge somehow, maybe that would be eligible, but that, at those traffic counts, I don't know. I don't know if that would be justified, um, so. Uh, anyway, but longer term, it's starting to feel like these three projects, either combined or on their own, are gonna be more like bonded projects than one year, you know, pay-for kinds of things. It just, it just feels like that's where we're headed. But not yet.
Okay.
So can we, um, kinda, um, come back up a level on this? Cause Sean, you were in a while ago and we kinda talked about it, a bunch of different things, um, relative to the highway department. And I'm just looking at the latest budget from Chris. And it looks like you've put in here for the, um, contract grader, right?
Yes.
Which we agreed was, uh, probably the right way to go as long as we're certain that the other emergency lane roads that we're taking care of now, that the town will continue to take care of those, right?
Yes.
Okay, there were other things that we talked about that night and I can't find the materials that we had on that, but we talked about, you know, different types of pieces of equipment. So where are we with all of that? What's your current thinking on all of that?
Um, my, my proposal is to, uh, to try the grading, contracted grading out this year to see if it's something that is gonna work to make the decision on the purchase of the grader or not. I need, uh, I'm staying with the, the new dump truck. Um, I've asked for that to be replaced and then the loader at the same time.
And Chris, are those gonna be warrant articles?
Yeah, I, I, I can't imagine you'd wanna put them into the operating budget, so.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what we're gonna propose is the dump truck, uh, is, well, three things. First, make the typical hundred thousand dollar deposit into the vehicle capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
Second, uh, take, uh, two forty, two fifty out of that fund and virtually empty that fund for the purchase of the dump truck and plow.
Okay.
And then, uh, lease purchase the loader would be number three. You know, over, you know, and, and lease that over, you know, four or five years, um, outside of the capital reserve fund.
Okay.
As I wrote to you earlier today, your, your fund balance position is gonna be pretty good, so as we get later in the budget process, you may wanna talk about using that, uh, for some of these warrant article kind of things as well, but we don't have to decide that now, but that you're gonna have a little bit more flexibility than you're accustomed to with that.
Okay, and Chris, when are we gonna kind of get to the point where we're gonna at least kind of start developing that shortlist of what we think is gonna be warrant article?
Uh, we're ready when you are, um. You know, you, you've got the, the, I, I don't remember the last time you, you looked at it in list form, but, um, the, the concepts that we're, that we're talking about are those vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, the kitchen for the, um, community center.
Yeah.
Uh, is not here in the operating budget. You've heard from the cemetery trustees about roadwork, um. We may wanna talk about E nine-one-one, but other than that, um, we're, we're, uh, we're pretty well everything in with the operating budget here.
Okay, and then, Chris, the other thing is, uh, Courtney came in and talked with us about, um, recreation and, and again, I, I can't find the material on that, but there were things that she talked about that we said, okay, we kinda need to look at the budget holistically. Um, so did you add things in here for her, or are we talking about, um, warrant articles for her as well?
The, uh, the, you, you've got a proposal for the renovation of the kitchen and that could stand alone or it could get built into the operating budget, um. The, um, we've got a little bit in there to do some work on the town beach to clean it up. Um, that's a little bit of that in the, in the rec operating budget.
Yeah.
Um, the third, uh, thing on her kinda wishlist is a, uh, is the gym floor in the community center, which, uh, I, I don't know that we're gonna have any pricing ready for a decision on that. That has not been the same level of priority as the kitchen and the.
Okay.
And the beach.
The one comment I had on the kitchen proposal, uh, and which I, I thought, I thought it looked good, um, the one thing, yeah, that I saw, it looked like you were saying, let's take the island out, right?
Yeah, the, the, the plan is to take the island out of the middle and, and, and probably replace it with rolling, uh, service tables.
Okay, as long as there's something there, because, you know, the counter space is small and I think when you're having, you know, people providing food or whatever, you need that counter space, so.
Yeah, you need, you need some kind of service mechanism for that and, uh, the, the last dream photos I saw were, uh, you know, stainless steel rolling commercial grade stuff that you can use to serve from any location in the room.
Okay.
Or just get them out of the way.
That's fine, okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments on that?
When are we gonna go through the budget line items?
What was that, John? I, I'm sorry, did we all miss that?
Well, you just sent this, um, you know, the budget worksheet, right? Um, obviously the twenty, twenty, when are we gonna go through this line items?
Uh, we can do it right now. Sean's here and, uh, you know, we can, we can do.
I mean, I, the first time I got to see it was tonight, I mean, I, so.
This, this hasn't changed since the last draft you saw, so. Uh, all the, all the twenty, the only thing that changed since the last time you saw this first draft is the actuals for twenty twenty, the, the pub, on the public work side, uh, I don't think anything's changed in the, since the first draft of the budget.
So we're at a two percent increase?
Uh, overall.
Right, that's what says in the law.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, with, with those, you know, other items that are maybe warrant articles yet to be determined, but yes.
It's pretty conservative.
I thought.
What was the date that you said it's going to the budget committee?
Our first draft is next week, unless, John, has their schedule changed? I saw some traffic today, like, I don't know, we're meeting tonight, but I think we're going.
So. I, I don't have that in front of me, I don't know.
I, I'm expecting to go with the first draft to them a week from tonight.
Okay.
And then not. And then not again until the public hearing with a with a night for department heads thrown in there in January.
Okay, so if you're going next week, we'll have feedback from the budget committee. And then I think on one of our upcoming meetings, we should do the final line by line by line, right? I mean, I've gone through it and I haven't seen anything that stands out to me, and I think two percent increase is is conservative, but it would be one more opportunity for this board to go through line by line.
Yeah, I'd, well, I'd like to see a a zero percent increase, but that's. I'll make suggestions for the next time we look at this, when I get a chance.
Can we pick a date on that?
Do you, well, do you wanna, I I was, I was anticipating that you would go line by line or or get your questions addressed, at least for Public Works tonight, cause that that's why we had Sean here. I didn't, was there something else you wanted to do with Sean or?
Well, I mean.
Actually, I wouldn't mind hearing again about the the vehicles that are being requested for this year and if it's possible to push any of them back a year, just to flatten out the, you know, flatten out what we're gonna ask the task taxpayers for.
Well, in in terms of tax impact, if if we are to, if we if we pay for the dump truck through the capital reserve fund and the the the, you know, the, that is a flat budget impact and then, you know, same as same as last year with a with a hundred thousand dollar deposit into that fund. Uh, and then the incremental cost is is the lease payment on the loader.
So let's go through this line by line, right? Uh, do you guys have the budget open in front of you?
Yep.
Okay, so if we look full-time salary increase of two point two percent. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
He I'm looking to see if I got a copy of it that I can just put up.
Yeah, Chris just sent it out today.
Oh, that, yes, 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 yes.
I don't see anything, any issues with that. I think that's well within a fair range.
Okay, no increase in in overtime, a fifty percent decrease in part-time. Any questions?
Did we hire more, uh, another full-timer? Is that why or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. A fifty-six percent increase in mowing and vegetation control.
Is that because we're mowing more sides of roads or?
Yes, I'm proposing that we try to mow the whole town next year.
Okay, so Sean, bear with me for one second and 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 the rest of the board members. So, you know, some of these roads have, you know, spots that have been identified with the Japanese knotweed.
Correct.
So how are you going to, uh, um, address that mown the sized roads that that could potentially cause the the significant spread of the, uh, that particular, uh, species of, uh?
My, uh, my contractor that I have is well-trained in this. We do, we maneuvered around it this year. We just don't mow it. We, it's identified. It's mowed around and we we, uh, and we mow. I'm working, I will be working this spring and summer, hopefully with the, uh, Concom to devise a way of removing the Japanese knotweed and and getting rid of.
Okay.
And so Sean, the reason that there's a significant increase there and and the desire to move towards doing all the roads in town is safety issues, right? So that people can see and there's.
Right, the vegetation has encroached into the right of way of the road via, I mean, I got a, uh, I got a claim filed against the town by a truck last year that because the brush was growing out on Mill Pond Road and broke its mirror, um, Primex then did the investigation into it and asked me for my mowing, uh, plan.
Got it. Okay. And so that would be something that we'd be doing moving forward, right? That that number is gonna be kind of similar as we move forward because that's gonna be something we're gonna have to do every year.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, anybody, any any other questions on that one?
What line do you want anyways?
Uh, that was line two fifty-six.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see. Yeah.
Yep, highway hired equipment plowing. There's showing no, no change and the comment says added contracted trucks for the winter of twenty twenty-one. So just curious as to why there's no change, but the comment says added.
The, I did add a, uh, six-wheel dump truck with eleven-foot plow, ten-foot wing and a sander. Uh, we didn't over expend that line last year. And, um, when we went through this, we thought that we were comfortable with that amount based on what we have for vehicles and contractors that we're contacting out this year, so. It may be, I I might be right and then I might be wrong. The winter will determine if my number was right.
Okay. Um, equipment parts, that's flat. Um, equipment, uh, I'm sorry, hired equipment for construction, two hundred and eight, but that's the greater services that we talked about, which would be a continued year to year, but that's hopefully prevent having to buy another grader.
Hmm, correct.
Equipment maintenance is the same. Supplies is a twenty-five percent increase uh, to provide tools so that the personnel don't have to bring their own and so the town supplies them, right?
Correct, correct. Right now, uh, the, uh, most of the tools in the garage belong to one of the employees or a couple of the employees.
They bring in wrenches and stuff like that, like a tool.
Bringing in tool. They're bringing in cordless, uh, cordless, uh, guns, um, wrenches, uh, sockets, specialty tools, things of that nature.
That just blows my mind.
Okay, no change in culverts aside from what we just talked about. Um, signs continue to replace the signs under MUTCD guidelines. What what's that? What are those guidelines, Sean?
Those are to change all the signs into, uh, high-intensity retroreflective uh, signs. There'd be stop signs, speed limit signs, school bus, you know, uh, turnaround signs, school bus stop ahead. Um, the, uh, the road signs themselves that indicate the name of the road is supposed to be high, high intensity as well.
So we've been deficient in that area and we're just trying, you're trying.
We are plugging away at it. We're making great strides in that. We're doing a lot of sign work.
Good, okay. Uh, sand, gravel and stone is flat, salt is flat, workshops are flat, uniforms. Uh, uniform cleaning down thirty-three percent. Any particular reason for that?
I'm going to, uh, I'm offering a, uh, an allowance per person for, um, pants, uh, t-shirts that, uh, well, the t-shirts or the shirts and and stuff that they purchase will have the town seal on it. And, um, we will be doing away with the laundering service that seems to, uh, just be escalating yearly. And not everybody uses the uniform service.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, fuel is the same, telephone. Six hundred and twenty-two percent increase and the description is plug.
Yeah, that's me.
That's all I figured.
I I I do some of this to Sean sometimes. Uh, the, uh, the tel- telephone and internet is, well, I'm trying to blend those two lines throughout most of the budget. Um, we're in the process of, uh, we're we're gonna, we're gonna use cellular internet at the at the highway garage. We don't have internet service there right now. And to do things like, uh, electronic time clocks and things like that, we we need to have internet there. Um, and our our phone billing is a little wonky with cell phones and corded phones and things, so, um, those are the two big factors there. And you'll you'll see it changing at the recycling center too. Um, we're not really doing anything differently. We're just showing it differently in the budget, other than that internet service.
Can you just put a better description there, Chris, please?
Yeah, yeah, I, before we, before this gets beyond you, I'll, I'll have.
Thank you. Uh, engineered consulting up a hundred and fifty percent, but I mean, the numbers are not that big. Any questions on that, you guys?
I'm good.
No, no, not really.
And then drug testing miscellaneous are the same. And then the highway vehicles are what we just talked about, putting on warrant articles. So the increase overall is six point two percent.
That's not bad.
Any other questions for Sean?
No, I don't have any.
I'm good.
And that drug testing thing, what does that cover? Do we do randoms and all that stuff too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris, before we, before we actually commit to the cellular internet at those locations, um, they they will do a try before you buy kind of thing, proof of concept. So we can make sure it actually works, cause you know how cell coverage is so spotty in town. Um, we wanna make sure that they have a good signal at those locations.
Yeah, we've, we've been round and round on that this year and we're, we're hardwiring internet into the recycling center because there is, there is no viable cell service there.
Right, right.
I I did offer it up as a place to put a tower if anybody's interested, but I haven't had any takers yet.
For a cell tower?
Yeah. Cause I wanna get cell service there, you know, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, no takers yet.
It's too close to the other one on Route Four.
Oh, I I know, and there should be service there, but but it's in a hole or something.
In a hole, yep. Yep.
So any more talk on the highway?
No, I know, I'm 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 good with the, I'm good with the explanation on the budget.
John?
Nope, just when it comes to what we're gonna purchase for the equipment, but that's what I'm looking here is fine.
Okay. And Donna, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you for your help the other day too, Sean.
You're welcome. Chris, you need anymore?
Uh, if they don't, I don't. I can get in plenty of trouble without you, but.
All right, guys. Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
All right.
I see that, uh, Gary, uh, is here. Did we wanna circle back to him in regards to any more thoughts on recycling or are we done with that?
I think Gary had said there there was some more that he wanted to cover with us, but I don't I don't remember per se.
Well, what does Stratford Regional want information? Well, I mean, what information can we provide to Stratford Regional that's gonna help them? What are they looking for us? Like, wow, we operate towards other towns. I didn't get to hear anything Gary said because obviously I wasn't.
So everybody's power is working tonight, right?
Yeah.
So far.
Okay, just checking.
Brush your fingers.
Yeah, so so this came about in a roundtable recycling discussion. And and it was all around base, the basic gist is regional recycling and how that can help uh, towns and municipalities regionally, so maybe by working together in different ways. Um, one of the big things that came out of it for me was just, uh, trying to, oh, I I sent you guys out this, uh, this Foster's Daily, um, Democrat, uh, piece that says that the town, you know, voted this in nineteen seventy-three. So we, you know, one of the first recycling, uh, established establishments, uh, around and in doing that, what what for for my my thoughts were to kind of build some pride around that. And and one way I was thinking, and this came up in our discussions, was about, um, putting information and education out to residents. Especially there's a lot of, a lot of new residents that don't really know the history, don't know, um, you know, where we started. And and also by showing them, the residents, I mean them, uh, you know, what what the, what recycling is doing for us. And in short, really offsetting our, uh, MSW costs, um, hopefully. I realize, you know, the revenues are down across the board. There's not a lot of positivity out there, but we can build some positivity in the, within the town to try to keep that up. And one of the, one of the recent thoughts in in listening to you guys talking about the stickers is, um, maybe by people seeing, uh, for instance, you know, last month our revenues on plastics were this or or whatever it is. Just to let people know what's coming out of recycling, um, that maybe they would like to see the sense in coming up with a a nominal fee for a sticker then. But without knowing too much about the the history or about what's going on, they, you know, might think differently. Um, so the 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 gi- the end gist of this was to maybe just put, whether it's online, whether it's on a whiteboard, to probably monthly or however often it it might be, uh, to put some information out there, um, so people can see what's going on month to month, week to week, uh, whatever that looks like. So that's the gist of the, what I wanted to bring to you guys. And I know some of you got, some of you just got bits and pieces last time, so I'll try to reiterate for you.
But that's actually a great idea of having a, you know, a board or something up. So when people go to the recycling center, they can see what they're, they're, you know, what they're getting, you know. The town X amount on aluminum cans recycling benefited by last month X amount of pounds, which equals, so what? Somewhat dollars. But then to show the bulk waste cost of what they're throwing away costs X amount of dollars. There's your negative. By you not recycling and throwing into that dumpster, this is what, you know, that other costs, you know. I think if people understood what more the budget was and how much it costs to actually run the recycling center, you know, it might not be such a problem, but.
Yeah, even even if they just saw that, you know, all right, it costs us this much to, uh, compact trash last month, but we did get this, this much back in recycling to offset that, you know, so just, yeah, just, uh.
Well, people, people more recycled, you know, on the, what we're making money off, metals and cans and whatever, uh, that we actually make money off. You know, to promote more of that, that'd be good.
Just to, just to play devil's advocate, do you really think we're gonna move the needle, needle on that? I mean, I'm I'm kind of of the mind of the people who are recycling now are and the people who aren't, aren't. And the ones who aren't, it's because of kind of the the convenience factor in the.
I use TrashBusters. I recycle my cans and my glass bottles. That's it.
Yeah. So I'm just, just to play devil's advocate, I'm curious as to how much education is gonna move the needle on it. I was saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just, you know.
I don't know, I'm I'm seeing, uh, you, well, you guys probably know this too, uh, quite a, quite a influx of people coming into town from different places and. From different places and. This, I I've been thinking about this, about those people especially that don't even know where recycle the recycling center is. Never mind what it's about or what it's doing for us or what it can do for us, so. Might come back there.
Yeah, that's that's fair. No, I think that's fair.
Um, the other part of this discussion was, and I mentioned regional, regional. Health, if you will, so there may be, and we there's a lot to look at in all of this. But, you know, for instance, storage of. Commodities or um maybe trying to trying to piggyback with. I don't know, let's say just use Lee, for example, that might be unrealistic, but it may not. Know that sending uh filling a truckload with Lee. So that you get the most for your dollar, a lot of different aspects of it that I'm learning. More and more. That there's somebody that that was part of these discussions that's been involved in recycling for about thirty years. And so he's been, every question that comes up, he's been able to answer, so a lot of uh. Lot of um people involved in this that do have a lengthy background and maybe are. Able to be of help.
Gary, in in any of these discussions, I mean, is it is it talked about how the market for recycling is? Basically just collapsing?
Absolutely.
Because like, that's a reality that we we have to contend with. You know?
It it's absolutely the the case and. That's part of the reason why this this these discussions came up, because. You know, the towns are seeing that loss and that they're trying to. Adapt or improve on what what is there. So, yeah, that's.
And some of this got to do with the pandemic though, I mean. I know, I mean, some places thrive in recycling and. Others don't push it so much, but I remember when I lived in Mass, a short time, they they huge recycling down there. Even though they're collecting a lot more than we would, but. I think COVID affected everything. I think it's affected recycling, you said it has in in a lot of areas.
I think Chris is probably seeing more of this maybe than any of us is a. The the drop in what, you know, we're being paid for recyclables. So that's that's the reality and that's the tough thing to get around. But still, do we want to recycle and get what we can out of the recyclables or get as much as we can? Or do we want to just pay to? To compact trash and send it out that way, so that that's the most expensive way.
But at this point, our our energy. Honestly, what's what's killing us more than. What's going to kill us next year more than the change in the Chinese recycling recycling market, that's already lost, that's that's revenue that's probably never coming back. Is the trucking. The trucking costs and the tipping costs, the trucking in particular affects every material that we move. And those prices have gone through the roof and that is a that is a place where working regionally may may make some sense. It would it would have a bigger dollar impact if we could if we could save. If we could save ten percent on everything we trucked, we'd save more money than increasing. Recycling by three percent easily. So if if the if the regional commission wants to get into anything, I would suggest it's let's let's look at the operational side of it. Uh, behind the scenes, that's I think where we're struggling more than anything.
Yeah, Chris, that was definitely brought up and and but just hasn't been delved into yet, but I think that you're right, that. We've, everything I've heard. Yeah, that's that's a huge, huge impact. So hopefully that's somewhere that. The the regional commission can look into.
What can they actually do? I mean, are they just a think tank, an advisory board or? What what can they actually do? To help us?
Well. Well, that's really where these discussions, why these discussions came up is. And it's it's really not developed fully yet. But they've come up to see what is possible. Really, they're just what they're what the. The regional planning board is trying to do is be go between by pulling towns together to maybe work together is. And do what they can, they've offered their staff to help in so far the. Maybe uh trying to pull some of the info, the the information together to put out there, educational. And otherwise. But so that's. Really where what what's happened is it what the 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 regional. Planning is able to do is pull the towns together to maybe work together and and put things together together regionally, as Chris mentioned, maybe. The trucking end of things could be a possibility.
Right.
Have they done a survey, Gary, of or? So have they done a survey of towns, like of the town administrators and town managers and. You know, the uh public works directors to try to get a sense from them of, you know, what are the things that would really move the needle? And how they might be able to try to help impact that?
I don't know if that's been done yet, but that's an idea. Um, what what's so far that I'm I'm aware of has happened is. Been just. People from different areas pulled into these meetings.
Yeah.
And bringing input.
Yeah, because I like, I mean, the education is one thing and that's a good thing, but the bigger issue is, Chris points out, are things like trucking, so. If they can really provide some kind of support around the bigger issues, then that would be extremely valuable.
I agree. What I can, what I will do definitely is. Uh, at the next opportunity, bring that to them and. And we'll probably start that discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's the town administrators and the highway or the public works people who are living with it day to day on a detailed level, right?
Exactly. For instance, uh. The last meeting I did attend, the public works person from Dover was. Uh, participating.
Yeah.
And he, you know, bringing the stuff that he was experiencing as a problem, they do a lot of composting. Excuse me, so. That was on his mind and he was, you know, talking about how to solve that problem.
Yeah.
Which that would be a new area for us.
Any more input on or questions to Gary on this?
No, thank you, Gary.
No.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you for, um, yeah, listening and hopefully, uh. Well, I'll bring you up to date, I'll I'll bring this uh piece about the trucking forward and. Hopefully I have something for further report on that. I appreciate you, the board taking the time, I know budget season is hectic, so. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
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 Okay, so road standards. What would you like to talk about on road standard? Chris?
Uh, well, you um. You started this process a year and a half ago. And what we're. What what we are suggesting that you do is is get over the finish line with with something that sets. A standard for. Uh, roads that may be proposed for acceptance, uh, that did not come through the subdivision process, you've got subdivision regulations, the planning board does that. Uh, do a very good job of outlining how to build a new road, but you don't have anything for. Uh, the design of other roads. Two years ago, Moore's Road was accepted with the condition that it meet the standards set by the board and the. The board hasn't been asked for anything in that regard, but it still hasn't set a standard for what that would look like. And there there will be. While there was discussion at last year's town meeting about the amendment that you proposed that said. You know, we'll uh we'll accept the road when it's comes to the standard set by the board and the board didn't have any standards set. I think that impacted that discussion quite a bit. Uh, and you will see petitions in March for. Similar posit- uh, similar petitions in March for other private roads. They've already been shown to us for legal review. And you you're probably, we're going to suggest that you propose that same amendment. Uh, and that you're going to need standards before you accept the roads and you you don't have one, so. Staff's recommendation is that you get something over the finish line. The the document that you have is is pretty much a carbon copy of the state standard. Uh, it is nowhere near as detailed as the planning board subdivision regulations, but. It comes by way of our road engineers and the state DOT. It's uh, it's 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 what you need the road to be, so you don't take on big liabilities at the time that you accept a road, so. There's no no impact, uh, this this does not affect the lawsuit at all, it's brewing with private roads. You just, we we just think you need to have a standard so you can fall back on it if and when you need it.
Is there enough time to develop one prior to the deadline for any? War or warrant articles?
You can adopt this anytime it's ready to go.
Okay, my concern is this getting dragged out like our previous conversations has when anytime we talk about road standards.
I'm looking at a lot of Bart's comments and I think it's stuff that Sean might need to address.
Yeah.
It's it's technical engineering type questions. Can you run this by Sean?
Yeah, he's he's fine with with how it's written and he's here if you want to. He he was going to stick around, I think he's still here.
I mean, because because it might be, might need to be a little editing. Required in order to accommodate some of these things that Bart is questioning.
So let me ask a question, has everybody gone gone through this? Read it?
Yes. I have. I mean, I'm happy with the way it's written, but I, you know, I agree, there's there's some details that need to be addressed, you know, that that Bart.
Is Sean still here?
Yeah. Yes, I'm here.
Alright, so it, uh, Tony, if you could, just whatever questions you have for him, let's just, if everybody's good with it, just air it out now.
Well, um, can you see this, Sean? Can you see it on your screen?
I I got the document in front of me right here, a hard copy of it.
Okay, well, Bart put some comments in the margins, like for number twelve for drainage, he said, should you consider addressing? Uh, detention basins and other physical improvements uh associated with drainage, so.
Yes, so the drainage, we, our hands are tied as far as how detention basins are established, that's set by the state. So these subdivisions, I've already had this conversation with the planning board about accepting, we have one of them going in Mitchell World particularly. Um, that's going to be a maintenance concern for staff. So we have no control of that, uh, the only control as far as the specifications go, but we do have control whether, you know. We accept subdivisions with that in there. I mean, we don't, the town, what we have now is um. I i- is there's several of them, but um as the land uh. Becomes not as good and it's it's more, uh. I don't know what word it, uh, more waters, more water involved in it and how we have to hold the water within the property. These will become a problem. I don't know if I answered the question or I got sidetracked, but that's. If you have any questions about a fire away.
Well, would you say it's kind of out of our hands? It's not something we can address?
We can address, as far as the standard specification is, it's dictated by the state regulations. So we don't have any control of that, we just have control of how the maintenance is ma- maintenance is done on them and who does it, so. We suggest that homeowners associations deal with those.
Okay. His comment on number thirteen gravel base. So it's called All Street shall be constructed with a minimum three hundred millimeters of gravel per New Hampshire standard specs. Two thousand two, section three oh four, and Bart's question was, no layer of bank run is required.
It it's in the specification requirements and yes, it's gravel, and so when you read the specifications, you'll see. How you'll see what the layers will have to be, you have to take a foot down below suitable. Unsuitable foot below that subgrade and then come up, so you will be installing all suitable materials. The specific, the New Hampshire specific DOT specification has the gravels and everything in that.
Okay, interesting.
Okay. There aren't many comments, so I'll just go through them one at a time. Under number fifteen for gravel surface, Bart's question there is, does this accommodate the traveled way, the shoulders and the drainage? Ditches? And he's referring to the twenty-two foot minimum width.
The twenty-two, that would car- that would be the width, the total width of the road to 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 the edge, the edge, so yes, if it's a gravel road. It'll be just to each end of the gravel, the culvert can extend past that and it's better that it does. So that you you can create a head wall, you don't have to wash, but.
So that's the 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 road itself, the shoulders and the width for the ditches.
Yeah, there's the gravel roads really don't have a a shoulder, as you would know it, as it's backed up. To pavement, because pavement, you'll see a gra- two foot or one foot wide gravel strip alongside of it, calling the shoulder. Most of our gravel roads are shoulder and road into one, the biggest thing on our roads is how the drainage swale is.
Okay. Um, number sixteen gravel shoulders, says gravel shoulders equal to the base course depth. Shall be constructed adjacent to all asphalt traveled way surfaces, and Bart's question is, what width?
It depends on, the road ran into this problem on South Summer Street, we're keeping with. The width that was already there, so some areas got to two feet, others got one foot. So that is all based on what the condition is, we can achieve that two feet. And where we only have one, but we would have to shrink the road width and. I don't, I didn't think that that was the way to go, so. That um. That's going to be a. That should be a two foot by by rule of thumb, it's a two foot, but as they go for existing conditions, it fluctuates.
So what, is there a way to say that in this standard that, you know? You know, desired two foot width? But maybe different based on site conditions, something like that, but.
Yes, yes, that, that, yes, we can do that, Tony.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, Tony, I think you you also have to look, keep in mind that the the very last item on this number 25 is a. Is a catch-all that allows the board in a in a discussion about acceptance to.
Yeah, yeah, I think Bart is looking.
With these things and in reality. Anytime a road comes, there's gonna be a road-specific conversation because. You know, anything that's already built is probably gonna need some accommodation to fit within these, so you're gonna be. You're gonna be having a a conversation with with public works and an engineer.
Yeah.
Uh, as part of any acceptance that would come under these standards anyway.
Right, yeah, I think Bart is looking for a little more specificity where he thinks it's lacking. So, I mean, you know, in this one in particular, you know, the gravel shoulders thing, that. Could stand for a little more specificity, so. The the next one is sidewalks. Basically Bart is saying careful about sidewalks. The town will become responsible for maintaining them when it accepts the road. Now, we don't have any sidewalks in town. Yet, but it's possible that a development could go in where they construct sidewalks. And eventually. That, you know, if that, if that road was accepted, that would make us liable for them, right? Unless, isn't there a way to have property owners responsible for the sidewalk in front of their properties? I know they do that in some towns.
You you could, you, the planning board in the process of approval would, can can do all kinds of things. So the the plan, in in the likelihood of. The likelihood of a pre-existing road coming before you for acceptance that suddenly has a sidewalk is really quite low. Like we said, this is, this is really copied and pasted from the state, so it's trying to fix everything. Yeah, the general point is correct, but in in Nottingham, the planning board's gonna be involved with anything that has a sidewalk in it.
Right, right, and it's it's not a risk today, but you know, I'm thinking ahead to Nottingham 2050. You know what I mean?
When you walk down the sidewalks with your walker, Tony?
With my, with my walker that has tennis balls on the feet. Yes.
I forget the pitch.
Yeah. So that's pretty much all Bart had for comments, so I, I mean, personally, I would say, you know, let's add that. Um, that detail on the two-foot gravel shoulder, you know. With the. Two-foot desired gravel shoulder to number 16 and beyond that, I'm I'm satisfied with it.
Okay.
Just for a point of clarification, so I I'm I'm good with this too. Um, once we get the final copy. This is not the standard for a road being an emergency lane. This is standard for a road to become accepted as a town road. It's not the standard for a road to be declared an emergency lane. So just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that.
Yeah, yeah, the the town doesn't have the authority to impose these standards on a private road. As a condition of being an emergency lane. So, yeah, that's that's a non, that would be a non-starter.
And and again, this is not gonna interfere with the current legal dispute, right, Chris?
No.
Okay. Well, I mean, this, everybody feel, it sounds like everybody feels comfortable with this. John, you wanna weigh in?
Uh, yeah, I'm not for it.
Okay.
Did you say you're up for it or not for it?
Not for it.
Oh.
So let me ask the board this.
Wait, wait, can we just ask John to elaborate on that?
Yeah.
I mean. Let's look at Nottingham, for example. How many roads? Are there that we need the standard for? Now, if this, if we already have a town road that doesn't meet these standards, are we bringing it up to these standards? So like when you go, um. I don't know, I forgot the name off the road off. Off Ledge Farm that goes up the hill and around the quid down, um.
War Farm.
War Farm. That road won't meet these standards. Now, do we, because we have this, do we have to bring up all those roads through this standard? Or because they're pre-existing roads, they they don't need to go up to the standard?
Town already owns Port Farm, right?
But it's not gonna be, I mean. So what roads would we be accepting?
The the first sentence of this is is that this is developed to guide the reconstruction and relocation of class five roads. So if we were to reconstruct. A road that we already own, like War Farm. That, this is the standard that we would shoot for.
So so Chris, it's again, not not to bring up Port Farm Road again, but let's say down the road, the town has, you know, decided they're gonna pave the road. That in a sense would then have to meet this the standard, right? Even though it's just being paved?
Yeah, if if you're reconstructing it, which is, you know, paving it would be a pretty big. A a pretty big endeavor, but yeah, you would, you would, you would hand something like this to your engineer and say, okay, this is what we're shooting for. How close can we get and where do we need to miss it, you know? And then before you go forward with it, you come back and before the board and and and. Detail the things that you'd need a waiver for on, uh, under number 25. So if you had a, you know, a spot where you you couldn't get 22 feet, uh. You know, you you just have to detail that and the the board would make a decision at that point, you know. If that's okay, we're gonna move forward with the reconstruction. So. You know, in the case of a War Farm Road, this is what you'd try to do, and you wouldn't achieve all of it. Just the physics would wouldn't allow it, uh, in some cases. And that's what you you, I I, Sean, you you may know right off the top of your head, but um. The the pieces of Ledge Farm that that we have just reconstructed. Meet these standards, right?
Oh, they they meet them and exceed them in some, I mean. Yes, they meet them. The standards.
John, did you want to elaborate anymore on your?
So what if somebody came to the town? An emergency lane road, just because we're gonna bring that up again. They they wanna put an article out so that it gets it approved through, you know, the voting process. All right, and let's say it passes. The same thing's gonna happen. It won't become a road until it meets these standards, right? Pretend there's no lawsuit going on, just in general, just.
If 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 town meeting says that a road acceptance is conditioned upon these standards. Then what you said is true. Town meeting, town meeting can waive this.
Well, actually, there is no more town meeting. Everything goes on the ballot, so. That would be.
Still town meeting, it's just done.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But the final decision is made on the ballot, so, right, so at the deliberative session. People would have to vote on whether or not it was conditional on meeting the standards.
Depends on the the warrant article. The the board could put forward a warrant article to accept a road and. You know, this is not what we're accustomed to, but it's. It's common.
What do you need from us, Chris, pertaining to this? Just make that correction of what Tony had mentioned and and then what, re-present it to us for final approval or?
Uh, that would be great if that's where you wanna go. I I can do that for you for your next meeting.
Does anybody feel comfortable with that?
I'm happy with that.
Donna?
Yeah, I I think the changes should be made. We should discuss it again at the next meeting.
Alright, Tyler?
Yeah, I'm happy with it.
John? Okay. Alright, so just bring it with the changes, bring it forth for the next meeting, we can discuss it further then. What else?
What'd you say, John?
Nothing. I was thinking out loud.
Alright, what do we get left here? We're done with our appointments.
Yeah. Review action items for next meeting?
Do we have any? I don't. Do we have non-public to do tonight, Chris?
Yeah. Yeah. But before you do that, I just, and while Sean's here, I just wanted to touch on the gravel pit. Sean had. Had cooked up this theory that looks like it might might work pretty well. We we hired our engineers to do a survey on what's left in the. What's left in the gravel pit, what are the materials we have? And you you saw the picture of that and a and a quantity estimation of what what the materials are. Sean, do you wanna do a quick summary of what? In English, what what we learned from that process?
Um, is, so we identified what's left there for gravels, um, sand, if it was. This meets the state spec and yes, a lot of it does. We came up with what we thought was a value. In that pit, um, a number which is roughly 750, $800,000 value and material in there. And what we're looking to do was basically lease it out. To a contractor such as a Severino or a Coleman or something. And then get money back on the material that they're taking out of there. Uh, this has been done before in other communities, it was done in the city of Dover, it still is going on. And it started back a long time ago there and they they funded it to to build ball fields and it turned into a lot more. So it was another way of generating revenue. Uh, for what we need in the town going forward with the buildings and things.
750 to 800, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this material you can't use for the town?
Pardon me?
Is this material you're not, you can't use for the town?
Uh, we'll never use it all. There's there's a tremendous amount in there.
Yeah, what we're, what we're using the pit for now, almost exclusively, is mining and then screening. Winter road sand. We've we've gotten out of the business of taking sand, Sean, stop me at any point.
Yeah.
We've gotten out of the business of just taking sand from the pit. And putting it on our gravel roads.
Makes sense.
The, uh, it's just, it's the wrong material. It's free, but um, it it's the wrong material.
Yeah, it causes a lot of the problems with the mud and 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 clogs up the the stone and and the stuff that's in those gravels that we apply during the summer when we throw it down there and then with the time or any other time. It just makes more of a mess and causes more problems than than it does good.
Those materials we're not using are not presently going to use.
Correct. The material that we're using in the wintertime is we're actually digging, mining in the ground, going down five or six feet. It's quite an extensive process, takes a couple of months to do it. And to pull out the sand and then to screen it and then to store it.
So what we, we're gonna spend this year coming up, you know, we've we've never bought sand for for winter sand. We, you know, we've always mined it and screened it and created our own. Um, we have bought other stone material for our gravel roads. What we'd like to do is spend the next year evaluating what it would cost. To buy winter sand. We have some sense of that now, but um. And compare that to what we spend mining. Now, you see the 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 equipment rental line and in the highway budget is almost all the cost of a massive screener that we rent for. A month or six weeks and and we pay our guys to. You know, move dirt around the pit a good chunk of the summer, so what we, we're gonna spend the next year evaluating that against. The revenue that we might uh, might pull out of that pit if we were to lease it out instead. And and hopefully direct that, if if it's, if it's profitable, say, to make a change like that. To direct that that savings or that profit uh, into the other capital needs around public work, so. Don't need anything from you now, but we we finally have a number, uh, and it's in that. That first number is like three quarters of a million, so. It's it's big numbers, uh, and we'll we'll keep you posted with it, but we just wanted to plant the seed and. Let you know where we were on the thinking with that.
Hey, hey, Sean, just a question, so I mean, that's a good, great thinking, really, this is awesome. Um, when you throw out a number like 750, like over what time period would that be?
Uh, probably, I I I, 10 years.
Okay, alright. Yeah. Alright, good, well, it'll be interesting to see how, what the numbers look like as you move through it.
Okay.
It it really has that much life in it?
That pit? Yes, yes, well, to, for us, it would be, it would go forever because we don't have the equipment, the ability of the time to go in there and manage the, that piece of land the way it needs to be managed as a company like a Severino or Coleman would come in and exclusively dedicate large piece of equipment and manpower daily to that operation. And then they would, they would definitely, uh, they would, they'd manage it correctly.
How many acres is our pit area? How many acres do we own over there?
Eight, I don't, 18 to 20, I can't, honestly, I can't answer that.
I can look it up later, it's not a big dozen.
Yeah.
Another property selling 10 years.
Well, yeah, that then it becomes, uh, you know. Once, once it's, uh, once it's empty and, uh, it's not restored, what's the word they use with gravel pits?
Depleted?
No, but when you 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 bring it back to usable state, you know, where it won't.
Reclaimable?
Yeah, what, it's one of those.
Right, right here.
Anyway, then it becomes another asset that, you know, for the town, um, much faster than it would have just waiting for us to empty it ourselves. Yeah, it's obviously a forever question too, you know.
Well, I think it definitely wants some more discussion. It sounds like a decent idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm pretty optimistic about that.
Sounds good.
I just wanna, I wanna, you know, my family owned the pit on Raymond, on the Raymond and Chester line and. That's what, you know, I mean, a lot of 101 was built with that sand and. In the end, when they actually, you know, looked at it, they were ripped off by these contractors as well. You gotta keep an eye on it, you know, we took them for granted saying they'll pay you for every load they take out, so. They come up with some kind of mechanism, make sure when they take a load out, it's accounted for. Cause they will, I mean, contractors, that's what they do. But I I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Alright, so I guess that that ends that discussion. Was there anything else that somebody, Chris, is there anything else? Public stuff that we need to talk about?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I I I think you're you're B and D on non-public.
Okay, alright, well, thank you again, Sean, for, uh.
You're Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Anytime, guys. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Who wants to make a motion to go on public?
I will. Uh, I'll make a motion that the board enter non-public session. For RSA 91 dash A colon 3, section 2B and D.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, I've been. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, I've been Bartlet.
Hi, Don, I'm Davis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moran.
All right. Was there another one? Did I just lose you guys?
No.
No, okay.
No, I just stopped the, uh, I'm gonna stop the recording.
Pick up Steve.